We have let the record reflect that we have reconvened with all members present virtually. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic which stands under God indivisible, with justice for all.
I have a motion for the executive minutes of September 4th, September 14th, 2020.
They're moved. Second.
Any council discussion? We already discussed these actually, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and a motion for the regular minutes of September 14th, 2020.
They're moved. Second.
Any council discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, welcome all to another Wednesday council meeting, two in a row, after our Monday holiday. And I want to show off that I am a proud carrier of a Madison Municipal ID card. We had some issues with availability of equipment, but so that delayed the rolling out, and it is now up and running. So anyone needing ID to show that they are who they are and that they live in Madison can make appointment with the clerk's office. You can probably carry your Madison ID card. Another one, I want to thank one-time Madison resident Mark Sweeney, who gave me his mother's scrapbook that she made during World War II. She had cut out newspaper articles on Madisonians who fought for our country during the war. It is a treasure of pictures and information on our heroes. I have turned this over to the Madison Historical Society, who are very excited to receive it. And on Wednesday, October 7th, I had the honor to swear in our two newest sergeants, Sergeant Ken Shannon and Sergeant Sean McCarthy. They have served in our police department for many years and are now ready for their new leadership roles. In this Monday's meeting of tri-town chairs, we were talking, you know, this is the group that have put together to deal with mental health issues during the COVID-19 pandemic. And we have expanded our discussions, and no matter what your political affiliation, it seems that as we approach this election, that people are feeling stresses all over just related to the election itself, and that's on top of what we had already been feeling with the pandemic. So in order to create a positive energy as we enter the final days of the election and go into later fall, the tri-town cares is issuing a challenge for the week of October 26th, called Community Action Week. And it's designed to make a difference within yourself and to others in your community. And will be released showing suggested activities for various days of the week, but some of them, for example, write a letter for someone you are grateful for. It could be EMS police, a friend, a summon, a clerk at the store. Another example is either to the food pantry that's run by the First Baptist Church or the United Methodist Church, you know, donate some food. October 30th is typically known as Mischief Night. People have been going out over the years throwing toilet paper in the trees, and suggestion is buy that toilet paper, but instead give it to someone in need, and shaving cream and other items. So donate them to the food pantries. And then another suggestion for Sunday, November 1st. Take a walk around and admire our beautiful town. And the tri-town is the two Adams and Madison. Support or participate in the Association for Suicide Prevention Virtual Walk in the Chatham area. And then, you know, just go out and support a local business by eating or buying something local. So there'll be more information on this, and please take advantage of it. And that'll just help, help your spirits in a difficult time. The employees for the month of October, Mark Clab, Brett Smith, Chris Burns, and Ben Keenan from the Madison Police Department have been selected for the employees for the month of October. These officers and dispatcher worked together to successfully resuscitate a contractor who went into cardiac arrest while working at a Madison residence. And anniversary in Public Works Department, Chris McGugl is celebrating 20 years on October 30th. So if you see him, please congratulate him. And two things I also want to cover. Obviously, it is October, and over two weeks away is Halloween. And the big question has been, is it going to be a Halloween? And the answer is yes, Halloween is on. So a couple of things I just want to share. We are facing the challenge of trying to keep safe during these unprecedented times, and we also want to have a sense of normalcy and keep those traditions like Halloween going. So I have reached out to the mayors from four communities in southeast Morris County, and I'm going in support and commitment by Mayor Bobolars in Chatham Borough, Mayor Kelly, Chatham Township, Mayor Taylor in Farm Park, and Mayor Wilson in Morris Township. And for now, each municipality is committed to holding Halloween unless there's an uptick in COVID-19 or the state guidance has changed. And this is to discourage people from one town from canceling a Halloween and people then going to another town. So we want people to stay close to home. So it is on for, in southeast Morris County, and there are some ways to help enjoy this holiday without exposing ourselves to the virus. So here's a couple of things to consider. If you plan to give treats, consider ways to do it socially distant, less contact way. Good option, limited interaction in contact with trick-or-treaters by wearing a mask when individuals come to the door and regularly wash your hands. A better one, leave a treat bowl on the porch and near the sidewalk, at the end of the driveway, where it can be easily accessed. Access, and a better option is to rein individual packaged candy goodies, and so the trick-or-treaters can grab and go. I had a panel of Madison residents between the grades of second, second and eighth grade, and one of the suggestions that came out of that, and has also been out there now, is using tubes such as carpet tubes to deliver the candy remotely. So you can be creative. Use a universal sign, such as turning your porch light as a welcome, or, and you can use, we'll have these signs ready to download, so you can put this out saying trick-or-treat here. Or if you are not comfortable or not home, you can put this sign up. So you can get, these will be available that you can print out. And trick-or-treaters stay in small groups, you know, your pods you play with. That's the ideal way to do it, members of your own household. A Halloween mask does not protect you. Regular cloth mask is what you need. Maintain your social distance. Another thing that came out from our panel, one of the students said, you know, instead of six feet, I like to give an extra foot. Seven feet, I think, is, you want to be extra safe. So we have one out there that gives seven feet of social distancing. And that was a great idea. And if it is possible, trick-or-treat in your own neighborhood. If your own, if your neighborhood does not have a trick-or-treating going on, go to a friend's neighborhood, so you're staying again within your pod, and do not leave town to trick-or-treat. We have the best candy in Madison anyway, everyone knows that. And there'll be more information through the state and also through our Health Department as we approach. I do want to touch on one other thing today, and this relates to last council meeting. When we approved the Resolution 245, 2020, it was approved at September 30th council meeting with a 5-1 vote, and so it's to permit the purchase of 12 protective shields for the Madison Police Department. The Madison Police Department has and continues to be steeped in honor, tradition, and pride for the service it provides the residents of Madison and Morris County through mutual aid. For over 100 years, they've been providing community policing. There were walking posts downtown, National Night Out, ice cream certificates for children observing, wearing their bicycle helmet, and most recently organizing the birthday parades with sirens and recognition in this very difficult time. Madison Police Department is one of few departments in the state to be fully accredited by the New Jersey State Association Chiefs and Police. This rigorous process requires a commitment to comprehensive training in multiple areas for all personnel and equipment enhancements. When a funding order was approved earlier this year, the council took the extra step, which we haven't done in previous years, that required actual purchases to be approved by individual resolutions. And this was to ensure that we had a full understanding and discussion before approving each purchase. This purchase, the police department requested 12 plastic shields, one for each patrol vehicle, to provide protection for an officer or resident. Could be from a rabid animal, such as a groundhog, dog, and a fox, which happened a few years ago. And they are not the heavy-duty bulletproof shields. Mutual aid responsible, also for mutual aid responsible for field force deployment. And when Madison police are requested to assist other towns, are expected to respond with proper equipment. The shield was one of those requirements. It noted that in the event mutual aid was needed for Madison, Chief Atkinson would want our officers in the frontline to protect our residents. Currently, all our neighboring towns have this similar type of safety equipment. And I want to assure that our concerns are to protect our residents. That being said, we do live in crazy times. Madison is proud of our inclusiveness and support of diversity, but it's possible that some group, individual, may want to disrupt our peaceful events. Therefore, this plastic shield could protect our residents and officers like from flying debris like rocks or frozen water bottles. And difficult to imagine that happening, but you have to be prepared. After consulting with our insurance agency, this could be a liability to the borough if we did not provide the necessary defense equipment that our chief was requesting. The council was very clear throughout the process and the end of vote that the purchase of this safety equipment is tied to annual training. It includes de-escalation tactics. These are defensive, this is defensive equipment. And we must balance health, safety, and welfare of residents with the health and safety and welfare of our officers. Our goal is always community policing. The policing you have always seen is the policing that you will continue to see in Madison. We are in no way looking to change the way Madison police has and will continue to engage our residents throughout community policing. And just to closing, no matter what job is performed in this borough, this council and administration is committed to providing the equipment to protect our staff as they serve our residents. This includes the proper equipment for our linemen as a restore power from bucket trucks, our firefighters as they fight a fire saving a home, such as recently on Alexander Avenue, our public works employees out on the road filling potholes, and of course, our police out there building community while protecting our residents and visitors. Thank you. And now on to reports from committees. Finance Borough Clerk, Council President, Mike Alley.
Camille, you're.
I think somebody's trying to shut me up. I keep on getting muted. I don't know why. Anyway, from administration. Administration and the Finance Department has been very busy monitoring the global health pandemic and the impact it has had on the borough finances. Report was given last, at the last meeting, and I encourage everyone to take a look at it. The report stated that the revenues are expected to be down by $1.2 million. Fortunately, we have enough surplus to weather this financial storm. If you have any questions regarding this, or you can't find the report from last time, you know, give Ray or Jim a call, and they'll answer any questions and explain to you what is going on. Late last week, we had some good news from Trenton when the governor announced that Madison will get $198,036 in Federal Cares Act coronavirus relief funds. The borough has spent a significant amount of money on local relief programs, personal protective equipment, medical supplies, overtime for the health department nurse, staffing to monitor residents as they enter Borough Hall, protective shields, and cleaning supplies. These funds will help defray those costs. From the Purchasing Department, earlier today, the administration announced a purchasing moratorium. This typically happens in early December, but the date was moved forward in response to the anticipated revenue shortfall. Administration is asking all department heads to reduce discretionary spending whenever it's possible, which in layman's term is, you know, don't go out and spend your whole budget if you don't need the items. From the Finance Department, the boroughs had some big payments going out tomorrow. First, we'll be sending the Board of Education $3,598,173, which is their monthly share of the property tax revenue. As a reminder, over 62% of your property tax bill goes to the school board. Second, we have $1,772,112.50 debt payment that is due tomorrow. This represents the principal and interest on the bonds that were originally issued in 2008 that funded the new fire truck, the new public safety building, and the renovations of Hartley Dodge Memorial. Thank you, Mayor.
Fine.
Thank you. And Public Safety, Ms. Bailey.
Yes, thank you. First, I just wanted from the Police Department, the residents of the J Street area to know that there'll be a lot of gun shooting at the range this coming week. The Police Department are undergoing their biannual training and certification at the shooting range, which is a requirement by the New Jersey Attorney General. From the Fire Department, Homeland Security has opened up the second round of COVID-19 assistance to firefighter grants for volunteer and combination fire departments. The Fire Department will be applying to this AFG grant, which is for reimbursement of costs for equipment needed to deal with the pandemic. And normally, October is Fire Prevention Month, and the Fire Department usually presents fire safety programs throughout our community to the schools, to the seniors. And of course, due to the pandemic, the programs will be presented in a virtual manner through our Borough Facebook page and on the website. So please visit these internet outlets for fire safety information during the pandemic. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works Engineering, Ms. Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. From GPW, GPW continues to quietly do everything that keeps the town running. They maintain the sewer department and DPW vehicles, cut, weeded, trimmed, and mulched all the town parts, stripped the recreation fields, collected the recycling and yard waste misses, repaired potholes, repaired the Dodge Field tracks, maintained the day-to-day lift stations and operations of the sewer, and replaced and fixed catch basins. From the Engineering Department, I can personally attest to the work that is going on on Albright Circle in Beverly. Hopefully, by the end of this week or early next week, we'll begin the milling and paving on Beverly and Albright. And then finally, AB Contracting is doing the roofing on the Dodge Field playground building and work with interior plumbing and wall closures were completed and inspected last week. Once doors are installed and the building perimeter is secure, with final electrical fixtures will be installed and tested. So that new field house should be usable sometime in the next week or so. So that's a really, it's a really good thing to report on. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Community Affairs, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hear me? Okay, great. Good. In the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, we're going to be working with the Y on possible conduct of some of their programs at the housing sites like Rexford Tucker. Communication was sent out to enlist new members to restaff the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee as we move out of the COVID period. An ad will also appear in the Eagle for 2021 new appointees recruitment, hopefully. Possible COVID testing at senior housing will be considered. They have requested it based upon needs expressed by the residents. The Health Department can help schedule it. There's a minimum number of people that need to, won't be tested, that want to be tested before they'll send, the Health Department will send somebody out. So we're sitting there assessing that right now. Downtown Development Commission, the farmers market's still working every Thursday through November 19th, from 2:00 to 7:00 in the afternoon on Thursdays. Chamber of Commerce, scarecrows on Waverly, the installation will be up from October 22nd until November 2nd. Madison High School art students will participate again in the Holiday Window Painting Program. The Chamber will have the Find the Roses, Rose City Reindeer event again this year. Taste of Madison 2021 is scheduled for Monday, March 22nd, at the Brooklyn Country Club. Mark your calendars. Madison Community Arts Center, new entertainment series Fall Back Into the Art continues to grow more people and have really good entertainment on Fridays, starting at 6:00 o'clock on Waverly Place, in front of Madison Bagel Cafe. Discussions are happening about a virtual holiday arts festival recorded at the Arts Center to be broadcast in late November, December. Several musicians have expressed interest, as has Santa and Fairly Tickets University. We are anticipating the installation of the lighting grid at the Arts Center later this month. The Museum of Early Trade and Crafts plan is underway to have a scaled-down version of the annual Holiday Arts Festival by videoing roughly four groups at the Arts Center to create a show that will be available online. The Recreation Department, despite some challenges, including the cancellation of the Morris County Youth Football League, a relatively full recreation schedule has been offered for this fall. After the cancellation of the league, Madison Junior Football pivoted to an intramural seven-on-seven flag program that's keeping players and cheerleaders active and engaged. On Sunday, October 11th, a full slate of flag games was organized at Monica Stadium. Similarly, the Madison Junior Cross Country is also offering an intramural program with regular Sunday meets on the MRC Trails and MHS property, instead of their typical participation in the Lakeland Junior Track and Field League. Additionally, to fill some of the vacuum created by league cancellations, other programs have expanded their out-of-season offerings. The Madison Basketball Association is offering a full league at Dodge Field, and Madison Little League expanded their fall programming as their season was shifted later in the year. An update regarding pending projects. Advanced Landscaping will be in town this month to complete the infield renovations at Del Barton Park and Madison Junior School. And we recently ordered 12 new park benches and six new ADA picnic tables as part of the amenities to continue to be upgraded to parks and fields. I believe that's all, Mayor. Thank you.
You very much. And now Health, Ms. Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I get to the health report, just want to make sure everybody's aware, this Saturday from 10:00 to 12:00 at the Community Arts Center, we will be having our next community conversations. We will be having two different discussions going on. First, we'll do a voter education. I'll start off the morning, Liz Osborne, our Borough Clerk, as well as some community leaders will be presenting nonpartisan voter education information as well as a short trivia game to make sure everyone understands how their vote can be counted this year. It will include mail-in information, as well as what would happen if you did decide to show up at the polls. Immediately following that, Dan Villarreal, a Madison resident, will be leading a discussion on race, culture, and ethnicity. And if you're interested in that, we have two articles that I'm happy to email you. You can email community@rosinet.org, and I'll pass those articles on. As for the health report, the Health Department has announced plans for our annual flu clinics that will take place on October 20th and 27th in Madison. This year, appointments will be required, so we can manage the number of people visiting the clinics at any one time. Madison Flu Clinics will provide the regular dose quadrivalent vaccine appropriate for children and adults six months and older. Our clinics will not provide the high-dose vaccine. Visit rosenet.org/flu for more information and to schedule an appointment. A few COVID-related updates. As of today, Madison reports 192 total cases of COVID-19. Five cases remain open and are still being monitored by the Health Department. The Madison Health Department continues to work closely with the school district, providing support through consultation, guidance, and public health investigations. As Mayor Conley already indicated, many facets of the borough are working together to ensure Halloween is as safe as possible for those celebrating. As part of this, all borough activities, the magic show parade, the business district trick-or-treating, and the trick-or-treat have all been canceled. Detailed guidance will be available on Rosinet in the coming days. The New Jersey Department of Health has recently announced a new exposure notification smartphone app. This app, based on the Apple Google Exposure Notification API, is available in the Apple App Store and the Google Play Store. Consider adding your phone to our contact tracing efforts. The list of states and US territories included in New Jersey's travel advisory has increased to 38 before traveling out of state referenced COVID-19 nj.gov/travel for the current status and guidance around the quarantine protocol. Remember, the choices we make can have a major impact on the lives of our friends and neighbors. It can also impede our community's ability to operate schools, recreation programs, and to stay Madison strong. Continue to wash your hands, use face coverings, practice social distancing, and stay home and get tested if you don't feel well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Utilities, Ms. Ehrlich.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Electric Department, the annual line clearance has been completed on Noe Avenue, parts of Shunpike Road, Norman Circle, Horseen Way, and Stonehedge Lane. The electric crews have been very busy the last two weeks working on the new Dodge Field House and finishing up those electric installations, repairing streetlights and house services, performing general repairs, and completing a large number of markouts for underground service. The department is going to start a secondary wire job on Crestwood Road. They will be replacing old open wire and adding new transformers to prevent neighborhood electric service from becoming overloaded. And in preparation for the fiber installation between the two electric substations, crews will be going into manholes between the King's Road Substation and James Park Substation. From the Water Department, the annual fire hydrant and water main flushing program is about three-quarters of the way through. Flushing should be completed in approximately two to three weeks. Once completed, all 621 hydrants will have been operated, tested, and flushed. And the department reminds us with the cold water, sorry, the cold weather approaching, that we should have our irrigation systems winterized and remove all hoses from outside faucets in preparation for the freeze. That's all. Thanks very much.
You. Any communications positions?
None received, Mayor.
Thank you. Now we move on to our first of two invitations for discussion. This one is an opportunity to ask questions and make comments on any discussion items on our agenda or resolutions. There will be another invitation for discussion later in the meeting when you can make a comment on any subject. So if you're wanting to open up this discussion time, if you're online, you raise your hand by clicking the hand, and if you're on the phone, you'll be recognized by hitting star nine. And note that for security reasons, we cannot recognize anyone who says anonymous or a call without a number identified. When you are recognized and unmuted, you must first state your name and address before stating, starting any comments. The value you so may result in you being muted or disconnected. And please state the agenda item and ask me one of the agenda items or resolution that you want to comment on. Try to keep your comments to three minutes, but we will give you a one-minute grace period, and you'll be stopped at four. And so not to take from your time, we will capture any questions, and then we'll answer them later in the meeting or when we have the agenda discussion or immediately after your comments. With that, here are the, well, the agenda items that you are discussing that you can comment on are the current year 2020 best practices inventory, the 2021 municipal budget schedule, and the 2021 commuter parking fees, which is a reduction for those that had permits in the past year. And these are the, I mean, the resolutions you may comment on. And just a second. Resolution 250 is authorizing use of competitive contracting for the appointment of municipal prosecutor. And this is annual, all our court officials are on, the prosecutors on annual contract, and we're just soliciting qualifications for the potential of a new prosecutor. Resolution 251, appointment of Dennis Harrington, position of Assistant Engineer, Zoning Officer. This is a position that recently opened with Frank Russo leaving. He'll be annual salary of $109,000 per year. Resolution 252, authorize the purchase of meters and data recorders and radio frequency meter interfaces under Morris County Co-op. Missing counsel not to exceed $18,500 funded through organ 282020 or other accounts that may be appropriate by the CFO. Resolution 253, resolution authorizing a medical and prescription drug plan offered under the state benefit program, the state in New Jersey for the borough employees, full-time employees. with state and New Jersey for the borough employees, full-time employees. Resolution two fifty-four, appointing Carmen Pasto to the position of substitute crossing guard. Resolution, um, two fifty-five is confirming membership of Troy Baholic in the Madison Hold Company, number one. Resolution two fifty-six is, uh, amending the residential commuter parking permit fees in response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. This is a discussion item you'll be hearing more about. But for those that hold permits, it would be permit for next year instead of four fifty would be two twenty-five. Resolution two fifty-seven, resolution authorizing the purchase of C Click Fix Public Reporting Licenses through Civic Plus. This has been a previous, uh, discussion item, and this is three additional licenses in the amount of ten thousand dollars annually. So that's amending resolution two ten twenty twenty. So if you wish to comment on any of those resolutions or the discussion items, you may raise your hand now. Again, if you want to comment on other topics, you'll be coming up shortly. Anyone wanting to comment? And I see no hands. We move on to, um, agenda discussions. Best Practices Inventory. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. The fiscal, the state's Fiscal Year Appropriations Act requires that each municipality submit a best practices inventory promulgated by this Division of Local Government Services every year and has a number of questions. Failure to submit the inventory and answer the questions, um, or failure to obtain a certain score could result, it would result in a reduction of municipality's state aid. We've done this a number of years. Part of the requirement is that we, uh, make sure that we have this presented to the council at a council meeting. The actual responses will be posted on Rosenet if anybody wants to see it. In general, the inventory encourages municipalities to embrace best practices that promote financial accountability, sound management, and transparency. And as I said, discussion of the best practices checklist is required. The borough scored sufficient funds and will receive one hundred percent of the state aid. In fact, we only had one question, um, that we were unable to answer yes to. Lots of different questions, um, were asked regarding things like overtime for department heads, Fair Labor Standards Act, whether we're complying with that, whether our annual budget, uh, process is being followed appropriately and we're submitting in an appropriate time. Questions about whether we contract with an insurance broker. We actually don't even do that. We, we have in-house staff that manage, um, our insurance coverage with the Joint Insurance Fund, Cyber Security Internet Response Plan, and other items like that. So, um, council did receive this packet, um, back on Friday. As I said, we're able to answer yes to every question but one. So, um, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, so, um, the, uh, the question that we answered no to, um, it's kind of like a mouthful. Accumulated absence liability trust fund. Can you explain that a little bit? That, that's a mouthful.
Sure, um, as council knows, we have, um, reserve funds for various items. We're reserving money for a substation repair. We have a tax appeal reserve fund. Many towns establish an accumulated absence liability trust fund, and that is a fund where they deposit money on an annual basis to help cover accumulated absences. Accumulated absences are when someone retires, uh, and they have a number of sick days. They are legally allowed to cash in those sick days. We don't particularly, we don't, we don't tend to do that. Instead, we have the employee retire, let's say, in February, but they'll stay on the books until the end of March or the end of April, and they'll, they'll use that sick time to stay on the books that way. So instead of actually issuing payments to, um, the particular employee, we will just keep them on the books and our budget allows us, um, to do that. And oftentimes, we don't even fill that position until that first employee is off the books, so there's no budget impact. The reason we haven't pursued this, um, it, it is a good fiscal thing to do, is that there, there's obviously been a, a lot of discussion about, does the borough have too much surplus? Do we, are we, have too much of the taxpayers' dollars? And as you said, Carmela, um, earlier in your report, thank goodness we had that surplus because we're going to be one point two million dollars short on revenue this year. So there has been this pushback on adding up all the reserves and all the capital accounts and saying the borough has X millions of dollars. That's too much. It's kind of for that reason that we haven't done it. The second reason is, um, administration does feel that, um, you know, until recently, you know, our surplus has been fine to cover it, and our policy of not doing a payout, but, but allowing that employee to use the accrued time to extend, um, to extend their payment is, uh, is, is a reasonable policy that, that kind of eliminates the need for that. We're comfortable with not having it, but if you want to, we can certainly talk about it.
Do you, uh, do you see that changing, you know, uh, in the next couple of years? You know, but we, we don't know what twenty twenty-one is going to bring us. You know, we've, we've been saying that since the last budget cycle. So, I mean, is that something that maybe you'll consider in the next couple of years?
It's certainly something to look into. If we find that our, our surplus is depleted and we want to look for, um, you know, a way to protect ourselves from this, that would be a viable solution. We, we may get guidance from the rating agencies that they would prefer that we do. Right now, our, our, our general surplus makes them comfort, and our ability to, to tax and, and charge utility rates makes them comfortable. It's possible that in the future, we would consider making that change, and that would be something where we would have a robust discussion with council on the pros and cons.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll go on to the, uh, budget schedule, Jim.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna see if I can, uh, figure out the technology to share my screen. Bear with me here one second. I apologize. I just really quickly want to show everyone, um, watching online and council, um, proposed budget schedule. This was sent to, um, all the elected officials, just less than an hour ago in a memo, so you can just add it to your calendar. This follows a, a plan that we've done for the last four or five years where we talk about capital first, then, um, in early January, open space, change the second meet, and all of these are actual scheduled council meetings. None of them are, are special meetings. On January, we would talk about, um, the operating capital needs for the utilities and public works. On February eighth would be our first toe in the water on the budget. February twenty-second, we talk about department heads and have a second budget discussion. March eight, in the past, we've had a special meeting, um, and we'll, I assume we'll just kind of keep that in our pocket as a possible need, uh, Mayor, if, if that works for everyone, if we need to have another, um, budget discussion. But then March twenty-second would be the introduction of the budget and, uh, and the vote by the council to introduce the official state budget. We're then required to have it out for at least twenty-eight days in the public realm, so residents can review it. And then April twenty-sixth would be a short presentation, and then the council hearing and final vote to adopt the budget. This, along with other meetings and presentations we recently, recently had, again, will be eight to ten times where we'll be talking about various budget items.
Looks, looks good, and, um, you know, we've, we'll see whether, whether we can get by without that special meeting. Last couple of years, we've added that one. It's nice to be able to just stick to the regular council meeting, so good job with that. And a reminder to, uh, uh, those are, listening to the meeting that, um, one of the key things about the December fourth five-year capital rev- plan review is we like to get out of the box with incorporating money very early in the new year, usually in our first or second meeting of introduces ordinances, so we can get the, uh, bid documents out on the street and, um, beat others to it and get, um, more favorable bids and, um, more favorable timing with the projects. Any other comments?
Yeah, I, you know, I, I just want to ask Jim, last year, uh, the state kind of pulled a fast one and, uh, you know, gave you a little bit extra work. I mean, is, is that going to be ongoing this year? And is, is there anything extra that, um, that is going to happen?
Uh, I don't think so. I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop the sharing if that's okay. I think everybody's seen this. This, this schedule will be posted on Rosenet as well, and the annual budget process page on finance. I don't know. I don't anticipate that. I don't think we're under review this state review this year. I think that's next year, so that's fortunate. It was, uh, two years ago where every three years we're under state review. Every year, there, there's new things. You're talking about the, uh, the financial submission program that the state was, uh, trying to push through, and they finally pulled the plug on that. So that, that was a little bit of a challenge in terms of submitting all the different documentation, but, uh, we'll shoulder through it, so I don't see there being any, any big impact on that. But if there is, I'll, I'll certainly let council know if we need to change.
I know you don't have a crystal ball, um, but does, do you think that the fact that they extended their budget, I think through September, if I remember, their fiscal year, is that going to make states different for next year, or will they, do you think they'll just go back to what the normal fiscal year is?
The, I, I think the state, uh, I, I don't want to try to anticipate what they're going to do. I think they're going to go back. That was a very, very rare situation where they passed that three-month budget and then did a nine-month budget. I think they're going to go back to the, to the regular schedule. Um, it's impacted the timing of our state aid, but again, having that surplus gives us the cash flow to not be in a difficult situation, to not be able to pay that three point five million dollars that Carmela talked about to the border there, or the one point seven million dollars to the, to the, to the, uh, for the debt. So, uh, I don't have a crystal ball, but I don't believe that's going to be an issue, and I think we should be able to adhere. While we won't be in a normal fiscal situation in terms of the budget discussions, I think we'll be on a normal calendar cycle. The state did announce through a local finance notice, uh, a few changes. Towns can, uh, advance what's called the Special Emergency Appropriation. We're not going to need to do that because of our surplus. Thankfully, we're not going to be in that much of a cash flow crunch. But they also announced, uh, rules that will govern how we can budget revenue. And so, um, that will change, and we'll talk about more of that during the budget cycle, but, um, I, I think we'll be okay.
Thanks.
Anything else? All right, thank you, and we're ready to start working on it.
Yes, sir.
Next item is the, um, two, twenty twenty-one commuter parking fees. Lisa is, is attendee, but I told her I would try to, uh, cover this for her so she can stay in the cheap seats, but we will bring her in as a panelist if there's questions directly for her. The, um, th- this is in response to the fact that most of our residents that had bought, uh, commuter, uh, parking permit, uh, spots did not use them for, from March on. And, um, recognizing our, our rate at four fifty is fairly low, but we want to, uh, give them credit towards the next year if they want to get a permit. So at two twenty-five, uh, this would be just a one-year, and this is only for the current permit holders, and they have to renew by December fifteenth. Couple of reasons why we have this timeframe listed there is the fact that, um, we do want to open up. We have a waitlist of about a hundred commuters. It may not be, probably not a hundred anymore. We also, in, in the new world, as we shift, um, as the pandemic progresses, and even when there's a vaccine out there, we're not going back to the old normal in the near future, if ever. And so we may be revamping, um, the number of, uh, the ratio between, um, daily spaces and permit spaces, and this will give us a, at least an idea of the demand by, um, allowing people to secure another year and stay, you know, not lose their, uh, spot for the half the price. So any questions or comments on this, um, or do we?
It's there. How, how are we going to, um, let the people know that are the current, uh, the one hundred people? I mean, uh, you know, a lot of people miss stuff on, on Rosenet and whatever, and don't listen to the, uh, the council meetings. So, uh, is there, there going to be a special notification to each one of these people, or?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so what, part, part of the application process, not only for the permit holders, but also for the ones on the waitlist, is, uh, submitting a, an email. So that, that's the way we have been communicating with all the, uh, permit holders. So the, those that are currently have it will, will, shortly after the approval of this resolution, will receive an email stating that they can renew at half the price. And then, and then the, when we know what the demand is, uh, we will, um, uh, alert the, um, the waitlist. And I'm sure, yep, Rachel?
I'll just mention as a credit to Lisa and her team. As someone who was tardy returning my application last year, I got a phone call saying, would, are you sure you, would you like to renew your parking application? So they are very thorough and no one gets, uh, no one gets left behind. I just wanted to, um, clarify though, what, that, what the rate would be for, uh, new applicants receiving, applying for a permit for, for the first time for twenty twenty-one.
Right now, it, it would be the four hundred and fifty dollar rate, um, which, one of the things that we are looking at when we get into this new normal is, um, people may still be commuting to New York City, but instead of five days a week or four days a week, it may be, uh, two, three days a week, and so may change the whole model. So they, they would have the option of paying the four fifty or shifting over to the daily, uh, model. So they, there's, you know, it's, doesn't make sense to, uh, buy the permit. They can do it daily. Any other, uh, questions or comments? Okay, this will be, uh, resolution two fifty-six on the consent agenda. Uh, because even though we had two weeks in between our meetings, the timing of publications did not allow us to, uh, have the, uh, would not allow us to have the ordinances that were introduced at the last meeting to have a hearing tonight. So all those that were introduced at the last meeting will be, have a hearing at our next meeting along with the ordinances that we are introducing tonight. So we are moving on to our invitation for discussion number two. And the, um, I won't rea- read my whole, uh, field because I think everyone that was, uh, here before are still here. So, uh, again, if you're wishing to comment, you, uh, click on the hand to raise your hand or start that if you're on the phone. Uh, once you are unmuted, state your name and address, um, before any other comments, so you don't get cut off. And try to keep your comments to three minutes, but I give you a one-minute grace period and you'll be stopped at four. And when the public wishing to comment, please raise your hand now. Okay, we have Kate Solomon.
Kate, feel free to unmute yourself.
Okay, Kate, you should be, uh,
Can you hear me?
Yes, so it's take name and address and.
Um, my name's Kate Ransom-Sullivan, and I live at Sixth Highland Avenue in Madison. And, um, I just wanted to, um, come to the meeting to express my concern about the recent police department procurements. I appreciate your comments at the beginning of, of this meeting, Mayor Conley, Connelly. But I am still very concerned about, um, the message that it sends both to the police officers and to the public. Um, and not just the purchase of the shields, but also the gas masks, riot helmets, and canisters that I understand were previously purchased. Um, I believe that, um, buying this sort of equipment for our police officers has the potential to create the problem that it purports to solve by sending a message to the police that they need this equipment against our citizens and by sending the message to the citizens that our police officers are arming up to protect themselves against us. And I know that a number of the council members, um, attended some of the protests that took place this summer, and those protests, I, I'm sure you would all agree, were extremely peaceful and, um, took place respectfully. And I don't see any indication, um, that any of this sort of equipment would ever be needed here. Uh, I think the argument that the shields could be used against animals, um, actually really concerned me because it, it really seemed like they were searching, that you and they are searching for a justification for these shields by coming up with an example that you could use a trash can lid for. Uh, and you really don't need riot shields to deal with an unruly dog. And that, I, I just think that this, this type of equipment is creating, um, a threatening image to our citizens. And I also wonder if any standards will be put in place for when they would actually bring any of this equipment out to a protest. And I also wonder if any standards will be put in place for when they would actually bring any of this equipment out to a protest. So that's my comment.
Thank you very much, and we'll make some comments at the close of the comment period to follow up on some of the things you brought up. Appreciate it. And now Josh Gabriel?
Josh, you should be good to speak. Josh, are you there? Josh, we cannot hear you. If you would like to speak, please speak now. All right, we are going to disable Josh.
We apologize. Anyone else wishing to speak, please raise your hand. All right, seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. Kate, I really appreciate your comments, and I think your comments echo some of the thoughts that have gone through each and every council member and myself as we came to this decision. This is a very difficult time and a very difficult process of, you know, what is the right thing to do? What is arming and what is defending? And there is no simple answer. And certainly, not to speak for everyone, one of the things that guided me if I were to vote, but certainly I spoke in favor of this, is if we didn't protect, just as I said in my comments, if we didn't give the linemen the right gloves to work on the hotlines, if we didn't protect our police in the same way and something terrible happened, it would just be very difficult to sleep at night. That said, I never want to see our police or any police that we have seen across this country use this type of equipment, not as to protect themselves and not to protect citizens, but as offensive weapons. And we will, one of the things that was made clear from our chief was truly working, talking to our council members about the importance of me policing and his philosophy, and the philosophy of our full police department. We are committed to this training and to the continued support to have a very peaceful, inclusive, diverse town and do the right thing. We will, even though we closed the comment period, Josh may have his audio. He put his hand back up, so Josh will be the last and only speaker since everyone else had a chance. But we do recognize that technical difficulties do happen, so we will bring Josh back on.
Yeah, really sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can.
All right, great. Thanks. Thanks for giving me a second chance. So my name is Josh Gabriel. I live at 15 Hillview Avenue. And I just wanted to raise an issue related to Dodge Field. Actually, two issues. So I have a two-year-old daughter. Dodge Field is kind of one of our go-to places. We love it. And as you can imagine, during COVID, there's not much you can do with a two-year-old, so we are there all the time. And over the past few months, I've been a bit concerned about the conditions at the park. Two things specifically. I think one is the kids who are middle-aged, middle-school-aged, high-school-aged kids who kind of take over the park around 4:00 PM hour. You know, obviously, I don't have issues with the kids being at the park. They're well within their rights to enjoy the basketball and eat at the tables, have fun. But some of the behaviors have kind of concerned me, so I noticed a bunch of them piling on a bench and broke the bench. And, you know, Mr. Hoover, I noticed that you have that in your budget for new park benches. I noticed multiple, you know, multiple kids on swings meant for babies or for, you know, accessibility swings. So these, you know, piling on these swings. I actually saw one kid getting ready to ride his bike down the swirly slide, and there was about a crowd of like 20 chanting, and one kid was filming, and I had to step in and stop them from doing that. So don't get me wrong, it's nothing terrible, you know, but I think it's a misuse of the space, and it's not age-appropriate. And it's kind of detracting of what the intent of the park is for the babies and the younger children, at least for the playground area of the park. So that's the one. The other issue is, you know, a little bit more broad, but just as worrisome. You know, at Dodge Field, I've noticed more trash recently, overflowing trash cans. I have to guard my daughter from picking up bottles and bags from Chipotle. I actually saw a family go there on their own accord with trash bags and started cleaning up the park themselves to get rid of some of the trash, and, you know, bare mulch and some just general kind of disrepair, which I hadn't seen in the past. So, you know, I know the fieldhouse is going up, so I understand that the field is a priority for the town, and I just want to ensure that it stays that way and that we're not disregarding some of the other aspects of the field. You know, and I think, Mayor Connolly, you brought up the topic of other towns, and, you know, I've been to nearby parks in other towns, and I want to make sure that our park, our premier playground is as good, if not better, than anything in the area, which I think it is, and I think it should be. So again, not huge issues, but I think they are probably something we could solve pretty easily. So I wanted to raise it to the group and understand what next steps might look like and how I can, you know, help facilitate that conversation.
Thank you, Josh. Great observations. You know, get back to Austria. You may not, I live in foul ball territory of Britain from Dodge Field, so I get to watch a lot of what's going on. And yes, on the plus side, it's great to see all the activity going on, but it comes with a negative implication. So I think we'll work with Zach Ellis and others as far as what we can do is keeping, making sure people are in the appropriate spaces and appropriate behaviors. I think we should take a look at the busiest time. Probably not doing any trash pickup on those days, so maybe we can take a look at doing that also. And we need to, you know, there are, one day last week, day after, I don't know whether it was organized play or just a lot of kids playing basketball, but the amount of trash I saw the next morning was embarrassing. So we need to change that behavior and take care of it when it happens. Austria?
I spoke with Zach because we had another resident bring you to our attention. And so he's going to do social media, and we were going to have the police patrol a little bit more frequently, especially at those times, and we're putting up the signs that say it's a violation to litter and what the fine is, because it's not really happening with the coaches. It's happening when the kids are there on their own.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good points, and so we've, and Josh, I appreciate you bringing that up. All right, we are now moving on to introduction of ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading. Have a hearing date set for Monday, November 9th. 2020 will be all published in the Madison Eagle, posted on a bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading. Ask the borough clerk to reset orders by title. Ordinance 37-2020.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $72,000 from the Water Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a truck and accessories for the Water Department.
Mayor, I move ordinance 37-2020. I'll second it. Thank you.
And we, and any council discussion? Roll call vote.
This is Vitale.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Ms. Byrne.
Yes.
Mr. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Cohen.
Yes.
Ms. Erlich.
Yes.
Ordinance 38-2020.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $275,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the 2020 sanitary sewer improvement program.
Mayor, I move ordinance 38-2020.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote.
This is Vitale.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Ms. Byrne.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Ms. Erlich.
Yes.
And now we're on to consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move Resolutions 250-2020 to Resolution 257-2020.
Second.
Any discussion or any that need people? Roll call vote, please.
This is Vitale.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Ms. Byrne.
Yes.
Mr. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Cohen.
Yes.
Ms. Erlich.
Yes.
There is no unfinished business, so approval of vouchers. Will the clerk please read the voucher?
For the current fund, $304,047.74. The general capital fund, $1,718.52. Electric operating fund, $247,665.34. Water operating fund, $6,049.40. For the trust, $118,766.73. The total is $678,247.73.
Mayor, I move approval of the vouchers.
Second.
Any discussion or question? Roll call vote, please.
This is Vitale.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Byrne.
Yes.
Mr. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Cohen.
Yes.
Ms. Erlich.
Yes.
There is no new business.
Mayor, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you all. The public who joined us. Take care.
Bye, guys.